Exceptions, here are the exceptions. Commercial vehicles providing a service, including the delivery, loading, or unloading of goods and merchandise, or otherwise engaged in work in a residential district, may park along a public right-of-way or on a residential property for the duration of the service or work, not to exceed twelve hours in any four-hour period. That exception, I guess, would be if your roofer's going to be there for sixteen hours that day, I would not think that he would need to go get a permit to park his trucks while they're doing renovations on your house.
Uh, yeah, sorry. If you have a U-Haul, you wait a U-Haul, you're moving, so you're moving into a property, then you don't need a permit, because that's for delivery purpose.
And then the violations, any of the violations would be subject to a civil ticket or citation pursuant to our Chapter Twenty-One in our North Miami Code of Ordinances, which each incident constituting a separate offense. So, um, we've, we've looked at the language change there. And also, the definitions, on Article Seven, there's new language that has been added there, which we need to point out, with commercial vehicles means any vehicle, whether motor-driven or towed, including but not limited to trucks, trailers, semi-trailers, tractors, motorhomes, utilized, built, or equipped in connection with the operation of a commerce trade, industry, or business, and not utilized as a dwelling. Following vehicles shall be excluded from the definition. Passenger automobiles, including vans, vehicles used by government agencies for official businesses, and other vehicles which are, or may be required to be similarly identified by city, state, or federal law. A little ambiguous, but I don't know how else.
Yeah, that last part, I believe, covers your police vehicles, ambulances, emergency vehicles.
Precisely, precisely. Anyone having the... And, by the way, city and North Miami, pickup trucks.
My question, I guess, also, if I may, drop one in here real quick. With that, anyone who has a magnetic sign that puts on their car, that's really not a commercial vehicle, correct? I mean, if they're doing a home business and they are a florist or something like that, and they have another place where they do business out of, again, how does that constitute a commercial vehicle? Somebody that has removable sign.
That in and of itself, no, I would say not. All right, because there's other...
Well, he drives, if he comes home, he has a magnetic sign on his car.
Right, I mean, or you could put a magnetic sign in a vehicle, in, you know, so that in and of itself will not constitute.
Because I'd like, I'd like, I would like for us to kind of look at all the, the vague, the vagaries that might exist, so that we can, we can address those and have answers for those. And that code enforcement would have the right mechanism. And I, and I have to admit, I, I think this is a monumental task for code enforcement to have to, to try to enforce this. I, I think they're overwhelmed as it is now, but, but to, you know, to ride around all day long with the other duties they have.
But also remember, there are complaints have been, been brought up to the police department, so residents are aware, or they're keeping an eye on this, and it's just now they don't have a mechanism to address this issue. Well, with this, yes, they will be overwhelmed, you know, maybe, but at least the residents would call. And if somebody called, they would have to address it.
Although, albeit, resources are limited. And, and yes, code compliance has a monumental task. Can you imagine that task when you don't have a code section? It's impossibility, because in the instance brought before this commission by Mr. McDermott made, code enforcement can't do anything about that truck parked on a residential. I mean, as ridiculous as that sounds, where, where's the violation? We need words on paper before we can implement action. Without that, even if you could have an army of code enforcement individuals, you can't do a thing, so.
Mr. Gentey, I apologize. I know you were in the middle of your questions. Do you have any others? All right, okay, thank you. Ms. Belay, good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome again.
Thank you. I, on the other hand, have several questions. Well, going back to the magnetic signs, as long as the magnetic signs are within the letter requirements and so on and so forth, that should be fine, correct? Okay, and then, sorry, going into sec, going into Section H permit requirements, number two, in the most preferred available location, does that mean if the resident is parking on a front street with their commercial vehicle that is allowed to be parked in that area, does that mean that as long as they're within the confines of where the home, where the resident is, they'll be okay? So, for example, let's say the only available parking space is two doors down, because they're on the front street. Does it make it okay for that resident to park there?
No, that, that has to be on private, on their property, within their property, not on the street, not in front of a neighbor's property. It has to be within their property.
So, is there language for residents who live in the townhome communities that live on the, the front street?
And so, that is addressed on the, like, for multifamily uses, for dwellings or more.
It's two C?
Two C, yeah.
You'll see that for multifamily uses of four dwelling units or more.
Yeah, which is...
So, that's been, that's, that's for that.
That's for that.
And my last question was, okay, there was a comment made by one of the residents pertaining to... Sorry, I have sticky notes everywhere. Okay, here it is. Okay, so, there was a question posed to the board in reference to, um, the particular type of homes that the vehicles were parked in, and that they were unsightly and so on and so forth. And the recommendation was made for those vehicles not to be permitted to be parked in, in those estates, in those types of homes. My suggestion would be to, if, if that, in fact, becomes a recommendation and it comes to fruition, that it be enforced for the entire city. Because I do not live in an estate. I live in a regular, a single-family home. However, I would like the same rules to apply in my neighborhood, because I love my neighborhood. I take pride in it. I've lived there for twenty-some odd years. I've, I've grown up there. We know all of our neighbors, and we take pride in, in our yards. We take pride in our, in the presentation of our homes. So, my recommendation would be if it does come to fruition, that it applies to the entire city.
And I believe it does, correct?
And not just to estate homes.
It's not exclusive to one particular area. This is a citywide ordinance.
And again, if, if those particular areas have HOAs, condominium associations, restrictive deeds, conditional uses, D covers it, because then the code section will take a backseat to those restrictions. And those restrictions came actually before the code, anyway. So, they exist there now, and will not trump those pre-existing conditions.
And I, I'm very glad that these codes do exist now, because it is very unsightly to have trailer, trailer tractors, and I'm a girly girl, so I don't really know the lingo to these trucks and, and the names of these vehicles, but it is very unsightly to have these things parked on, on, you know, the, the properties of our residence. However, I do also understand that some of these small business owners cannot afford to park their vehicles in parking garages, or hangars, or wherever they keep these vehicles. So, I, I'm glad that there is some language in place for those that can, I guess, benefit from it, so.
Mr. Reese, thank you, Commissioner Belay.
I'd like to make a more stringent, let's, let's give you an argument. I have a house, and the neighbor next door has a house, and he has two vans, and he has a painting business, and his trucks are big, and he said he can park it on the side yard. Now, I have to look at this ugly thing, because my house is adjoining him. Now, it still hurts my property values, a, a, and that's the fallacy here, you know? I'm not trying to knock people out of business, but that's a fallacy. I want to look, my neighbor's property should be nice. I agree with you. You want to take pride in your property? I don't want to look at an albatross out there. For years, on Northeast Sixteenth Avenue, right across the street from, on One Hundred and Twenty-seventh Street, there's always tow trucks pulling in there, and I would complain all the time, and the police would come and probably get them out of there, and, "Whoa, we're only here for a couple of minutes." It looks like hell. Now, I work hard improving my property. I don't want my neighbor to pull a commercial vehicle over there. I'd even pull one step further. I'd tighten this up a heck of a lot more. The other thing, I do think we have someplace in the ordinance that if you have a boat or a motor home, that it, you have to have a hedge, or a fence, or something, where I don't have to look at that.
Yes.
Okay? I don't have to look at this albatross next door to me. We have ordinances on lights, where they shouldn't be screwing up the decorum of the neighborhood and so forth and so on. So, I, I like to see that tightened up. The other thing also, with regards to what Mr. McDermott brought up, I always thought it was a violation of law if you pulled a tractor-trailer into a commercial neighborhood, and they should have been cited. I, I've complained on that, or the tractor. One thing I'd like to go further with, and something that I did up in Bolingbrook, bring that darn tractor-trailer in there, bingo, we put a boot on it. You don't move that baby. And that's a five, five-hundred-dollar fine, that's it. You're not playing around. You don't, you don't... I walk in the city, and I don't mean to pontificate. I see signs up, I see trash, like graffiti, I complain, and thank God I see a change in code enforcement. They're out there grabbing this stuff. And it just burns me up that, you know, you get a reputation, and any dary that can come into the city and park that jalopy out there, and the heck with the keystone, you go over there, you see the trucks, and, oh, you don't want to get that. You're going to come home, you worked hard. You want to see this nonsense over there. I, I agree, this is a start. I'd like to see it even go further. I, I, I mean, you know, okay, we have apartment complexes within the city. Now, what do we do with those apartment complexes? Let's say, I don't want to knock a pool guy off Florida pools. What do we do with that guy's truck? He comes home, he takes the car home, he's on standby, and now, I'm like, we're going to knock him out of that? There's got to be a way that that vehicle does not have to be unsightly. Mr. Prevattel has an apartment complex. I'm sure you have people occasionally bring a commercial vehicle home. Now, you have a hedge over there, so the other people don't see that. I have hedges, but unfortunately, the commercial vehicles on my residential property would be visible from the street. That is maybe where we get the permit process. But you know what? When you have a home, and you really worked hard for it, and you have an albatross next to you that you don't want to look at, I, I, we just, now, we got to make sure that, let's put it in the ordinance that that should not be visible from the surrounding property. I, I think we should add that to it. I, I, we have it with the boats or something, unless you have it in there.
We, we actually have that elsewhere in the LDRs, because of a problem property we used to have. I don't want to say the name, but it was a result of a property that was used literally as a parking lot for vehicles. And these were Mercedes-Benzes, does anybody, does it ring a bell? These were four-fifty SLS, this were, but there were so many cars parked that... It was on a waterway, the, the other folks across from the waterway could literally look into this parking lot. There, there is something in the code that does require that these, that vehicles need to be, you know, they cannot be within the public view.
That's in the code, and, and...
Yes, but, but we can import some of that language as part of the permitting process here. So, that can mitigate, I'm not going to say it's going to, I can't say it's going to complete, you know, one-hundred percent cure, but it will mitigate the condition.
And you can put that in your permitting, and that's just an administrative ordinance, right?
Yes. That will be part of the permitting process, that, we can make it part...
Would that have to be a part of this language that we're looking at here?
Yes, we would add that, no.
It would be, it will be amended accordingly. It'll be a, a, you can vote on it with that recommendation. And that will order me to, allow me to make that modification, to send it...
Mr. Reese, would you want to entertain a motion to that?
I, I do.
So, it'll, it'll be to keep as part of the...
And what we would need to do, I'm sorry, would it have to go in a particular section of the permit-required language that we have in our ordinance?
Yes, that would be, yeah, because once they get the permit, they're not going to, they're not going to, you know, do the hedging, you know? That should be part of the permitting process. Yeah, we'll give you the permit if you keep it away from public view.
I'm looking at the, the language now, and trying to find a, where we could actually add it on.
On the F, maybe after E, on the two, eh, H-one, eh, maybe before E.
We have E.
That's one of the requirements, we could add that.
Where, again, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Eh, H?
Page four of seven, between D and E.
A permit required on the one, and then, you know, subject to the following.
So, okay, subject to the following.
We can add one.
Okay, so we're, we've got E, so that would become F.
F, yeah.
All right, F, with all new language? And the language that we would go ahead and entertain on that motion would be, um, what? How, how would we want to, we need...
That, that, that the commercial vehicle shall not be observed from adjoining property? What's the term, what am I looking at? I'm looking at the...
It's, it's, it's a buffering to, to...
The buffer requirement, shall not be visible from the, commercial property from the adjacent neighborhood.
To keep the commercial vehicle from, from view.
Block the view of that commercial property, of your adjoining property.
A visual shield, or, or screening. Screen.
Well, it'll, 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 all right, bring in the...
So, can we, we'll, we'll, we'll put that in their hands then, if that are all right with you, Chief, that they come up with the proper language?
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah. I'll leave that to the attorney.
So, when we...
I, I wasn't smart enough to go to those.
I heard a, a little bit of both, buffer shield. I don't know if it makes sense grammatically, but buffer shield sounds...
The technical is basically buffering.
Buffer, okay, because I heard buffer, I heard shield, and it sounds like it makes sense, so.
We'll, we'll come to a compromise on the definition here, or the terminology.
Yeah.
Due to the adjoining properties or the public purview.
Can you make motion? Okay, Ken, you want to go ahead and move for that language?
I, I make that in a form of a motion.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous on the added language, which will become item F under permitted required, Section H permitted required, it will now become item F. Is that good, Steph?
Are we going to approve the ordinance? You approve the amendment?
Once we get the...
I have a proposition, may I?
Yes.
Vehicles parked or stored on residential property shall be screened from the view of aborning properties, and for corner lots from the public right-of-way, aborning the side property line. Is that okay with you?
That's perfect.
Man, you're quick.
Good, good, very good. Thank you. Very good. Are there any additional comments before we entertain a motion here?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we pass this ordinance.
All in favor?
You want to have the honor of seconding? Would you like to second, somebody?
You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Belay, seconds? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, it is, we have...
I'd like to welcome our new members.
And congratulations on, yes.
I'd like to formally welcome Ms. Katrina Lunan Gordon.
Yes.
As our new secretary. And she's, she's doing a bang-up job, by the way.
Oh, yeah, I got like thirty emails.
Your next minutes are going to be like thirty-seven pages long.
I know. She's just typing away.
Oh, sorry, um, if the resident who spoke tonight could sign in, because I do have a sign-up sheet.
Oh, really?
Might want to catch it.
Microphone, you got to speak on the microphone.
If the residents who spoke tonight could sign in, there's a sign-up sheet on the podium, please. I believe there are three. Montgomery.
Mr. McDermott, Annie, did you sign, could you sign your sheet before you head home for dinner?
Yeah, Mr.?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, before we adjourn, we need to go ahead and finish up here real quickly with our agenda. Are there any committee reports that we need to address from staff?
Uh, I mean, as Chair Saifid mentioned earlier, we undergoing the land development, I mean, the comprehensive plan amendment, the ear-based amendment to the comprehensive plan codes, which is a statutory requirement from the states. Every seven years, we have to update our complaint to reflect any change in the statutes or that has happened in our community. So, this, this is being done right now. The draft is ready. We had a meeting on February twenty-sixth that was held at the...
Joe Celestin.
Joe Celestin Center. So, we were trying to schedule another one at the Gwen Margoli Center for April twenty-third, but it has been canceled as of yesterday, because there's a cop with one on that day. We're still trying to finalize on a new date, because that was requested by Councilwoman Keys to have another meeting. I mean, I think, you know, this would be a very productive, you know, exercise for us, you know, because you've been part of the land use game for so long, knowing, have all that history. And I think, you know, whenever we have that meeting, you guys will be invited, okay, to take part of it and be an active participant, and then voice your opinion, see, promote the change that you want to see happen. And, and once that, that, that we have, you know, come up with a date for that meeting, so we get an invite from us, so we can come and speak.
Are we on our ti, on a timeline now with regards to getting that submitted to the state?
September.
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 So, between now and September, that's not a lot of time.
No, I mean, yeah, because once you send the letter, the letter was due in September. Within a year, you have to submit your evaluation appraisal report. And I'm, and we won't try. I mean, because once we get that, you know, get the last, you know, workshop, because the draft is pretty much done. Did just some tweaking, and then some adding, and then maybe some deletions. And then that can be submitted to the, to the council for first reading, then to the reviewing agencies, South Florida Regional Planning Council, the county, and the state. Once we get the first word of comments, we incorporate that into what you call, you know, ORC objections, you know, recommendations, and comments from the state. We incorporate that into the final product, and then we take it back to the council for the second reading, and then the audience will be approved, and then that will be the end of it.
I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit confused on the process now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Let us look at this, and I'm a little foggy here. I'm getting old, too, so, there we go. Let's say we want to change the zoning hypothetically on Northwest Seventh Avenue, okay? And we want to increase the density, and we want to go high, say thirty, forty stories, okay? When do we get to give that input in there? That's what I'm saying.
And then that's the, because, because remember, the zoning has to implement the comprehensive plan. If you don't do that right now, it would be hard for you to do that later on.
Okay, so what are we doing now?
Eh, the comprehensive plan amendment.
We're talking about the comprehensive plan, that's what I'm saying. So, we were talking about bringing up, like, North Bay Shore Drive and that area.
Yeah.
Going high. We're talking about Watch Creek Road going high, West Dixie Highway, Northeast Sixth Avenue, Northwest Seventh Avenue, possibly even looking at changing the designation on One Hundred and Nineteenth Street, going more commercial northbound. When does that come before the planning commission? When does the planning commission give its input to the comp plant? That, that's what we're talking about.
Before, before we take whatever, you know, draft we get from the consultant to the city council, it has to come before you. But I think, you know, since it's going to be such a large document by the time it gets to you, and I think, you know, this is the, the purpose of those workshops, for you guys to, to push for those policies that you want to see in the future land use element, that will trigger the rezoning of those areas that you're talking about, to allow for greater height and density.
What I, what I remember, when we did this plan, what was it, how many, seven years?
Two thousand and fi, two thousand and eight.
Yeah, two, okay. We were over here at City Hall, and people were putting in their input, and the five council people were up here, "Well, I think we ought to go this way, and we ought to go that way," and, well, some of it came out, some of it didn't. Some of it was absolutely utterly preposterous, like the...
It was chaotic, though, very much, very chaotic.
You had a four-story building, and God forbid, if you had a fire, you couldn't build anything higher than a one-story again. I mean, absolutely preposterous. I think it's imperative, and, and I, and I say this, not to, but, you got several committees. You've got the planning commission, you have the CRA advisory, you have the downtown redevelopment. I think all of these street groups, along with our consultant and any other citizens that want to partake, should actually be in these workshops. I mean, we're the people that know the heartbeat of the city, the vibration, the texture, the, the, the economics, the dynamics, and, and, you know, a lot of us have been here, and I'm, and I, and I really appreciate the job staff does. But I, I can tell you, my, my twenty-seven years in the police department, and I can tell you, back in nineteen eighty, where the hell the city was going to fail because of lack of development. Now, we bring in a consultant firm, and they're here for a few months, and they're getting input from here and there and every... But they got to hear from us. And they really got to say, "Hey, folks, we live here. This, this is not an army of occupation. We know what's going on. We have the businesses, we have the, the, the homes, and we want a city, our city to grow." And the only way we're going to get a good city, a nice tax base, like I meant, like I meant before, I said before, before, said before, is if we go high. We can have beautiful, affordable housing on Northwest Seventh Avenue. If we use our noodle and really start to get a good tax base in. But the only way you're going to do that is by developing, and we've got to have that input. If we don't, we...
Well, is the workshop, are the workshops that pass, I was at the other workshop in February, you know, the consultant kind of has, I think, their kind of way of how they do things, or how they get input. They do the whole suggestion things, and get a bunch of ideas from a bunch of residents. Is, are you saying that that would be, that those workshops is really our only opportunity to re-district, to, to re-appropriate land uses, so that we can then have matching zoning districts?
Yeah, that still can be done, but I think that would be the, the ideal venue. At least you get to, because some of the time you propose a density change, you have to back that up with studies from the state also.
That's what I, that's what I was going to suggest.
Exactly.
Because you can't do, we can't just say, pick and choose areas that we think that we want to change the land use, even though it may make sense to us.
Yeah.
You know, because we live here. We actually, the consultant and all the data that they, they put together, it has to support the items that we're saying.
Exactly. So, that's why those workshops would allow you, give you enough ample time.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think what, and again, this is hind, I think, since those things are so, uh, require so much time and so much efforts on the consultant's part, it seems as though we should have, the planning commission, all these other, you know, designated boards should maybe have inputted that straight from the beginning, before they even started their draft, so that by the time, um... So, by, by the time that we got to the workshop, you know, we kind of had a direction, because now it seems as though we only have one more workshop left. What are we to do? Go talk to...
But it's still a draft.
It's still a dra...
It's still a draft.
But is that consultant now going to just go and do all the research?
I mean, because that's what we call it, it's a final. If, if we see any policy, new policy, language that needs to be added to the future land use element, to the transportation element, to any of those elements, like the new element, the climate change element, that is now a required, a required element, this is the time you have to suggest those policy changes, and then talk to your council, everybody has to be on board.
So, we don't have, obviously, we don't have to necessarily wait to the workshop. We, we, it's really up to us to have to do it individually. We can't do it as a body, sitting here with collective minds.
But, yeah, because you know what's going on, and that's why you sit at this board, because you, you're...
I understand, but I think we work better and more efficiently when we're all here and we're talking about it.
That's exactly right.
Than when we, we just say, "Okay, go home and write an email." And it's still personal responsibility.
I would make a proposal, I agree with you a hundred percent. I would make a motion, a proposal, a motion, or whatever we want to do, that we, as the planning commission, have a workshop right here with our consultants. They're getting good money, and we should have the input.
Yeah.
That's what we're here for. We're not here to rubber stamp it, we're here to give ideas, let them come to us.
I mean, is that, is that a reasonable request?
Mr. Gallos, can we do that during this period, where we can make a proposal?
Yeah, you know, the, it's a reasonable request, it can be made. Um, I'm not sure, you know, we'll see if we can accomplish it. Uh, at the last workshop, they, they did have a, 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 a process, planned process...
Yeah.
That they handed out.
Yeah, correct.
And, uh, so, we're, we're in here somewhere. They're still working on that draft, they're still... And, uh, so we're, we're in here somewhere. They're still working on that draft, they're still, um, but I, you know, I, I understand your concerns. And, and, and that draft should be reviewed by this commission, eh, with input from the public.
And then, 'cause more than any other commissions, you
I, I think it could
Correct.
You guys
That's what I'm saying, 'cause we deal, most of the items that come before
All the land use changes, you guys have to make recommendations. And I think you should, yeah.
It's as though, it's as though in the process, we become the, uh, the final step rather than what should actually be the initial step in, in, in the process.
Yeah.
Planning is, you know, so we're not, we're not receiving that information in a timely manner that, that should be done. So our proposal was that those consultants plan to meet with us
That's gonna be communicated to the manager and then to the city administration.
To, to let us, let us be, be a part of that process right from the beginning.
It will also give the public another venue to, and I see members of the public here wanting to
Exactly.
Uh, even though this item wasn't even on the agenda, but yeah, eh, eh, it provides an opportunity, a venue, a window of opportunity for the public to express their desires, their, you know, fears, their concerns, et cetera.
For, for the record, then we have, we have made this proposal. And I've got everybody agree
Yeah.
so far now, that, that the proposal's gone forth to staff to meet with the, the, um, with the consultants with regard
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that we're, eh, your suggestion is that we will, uh, we've presented to staff a proposal that we meet with the consultants in this chamber to to initiate, uh, discussion with regards to items that addresses that comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair, I may add also, I mean, the only thing that may require, it may change the order to add that, that one extra meeting, and I think that, that's something that is critical, I think that needs to be done, and that, that can be accommodated.
Right.
So, eh, eh, with that also, if you can tell us, may, now, what day you, you guys be available, at what time, 'cause they are consultants, we can
Why can't they just come during our scheduled?
But that would be May.
Too soon.
So you wanna wait till the May, or you wanna meet them before that? Because this is time of the answers.
Yeah, could I, could I try to address it? Um, I, I too see that, and I, I've said this for, for a long time, that even as some of the projects have gotten to our level on a, on a monthly basis, a lot of them have gotten to us too late. Uh, the damage was done, and we, you know, for lack of a better term, we rubber stamp it at times, and it's, it's very unfortunate. And here is a chance that could set the right tone for years to come to get us on the right track. Um, there, there is a, a slight cost to it, but I think the cost is quite minimal compared to what the value was for us to, as soon as possible, get the drafts as they are being produced. Uh, yes, they, they may be thick, they may be cumbersome, but I think we should get those as soon as possible. It allows us to come over, comb over those things, to, to make the details, to find out where our concerns are. And additionally, may I point out, these public presentations, um, you know, th- they are good in the sense that they have the appearance of inviting the public. They do. Uh, it's a, sort of you check off that box, it says, "Yes, we are open to the public, yes, we are open to input and such," but they really don't cover the detail that we'd like. There's a certain presentation of format, they have to get very generalized to a broad group of people. It's just trying to get, uh, sort of everybody on board with just the whole, just the fact that, yes, we're going ahead, we're going to go another month ahead, another month ahead, and so on. But, but our intention, I think, is a lot different. Our intention is really to comb over, you know, line by line, and, and also the overall intent, and to see that it is properly represented, uh, on behalf of the city, not just schmoozed for the, the general public. And yes, we will attend those sessions, uh, but it's very difficult to, to make an impact on those sessions. Uh, uh, you know, we, we're, you know, it, it's hard for them to, for somebody, anybody at those sessions to make a suggestion or raise a concern, and for them to then pull out the documents and go to this, this page, this line, this article, and then actually make amendments to it. Uh, nearly impossible.
And, and then to your point, you know, I mean, the, the most critical element really is the future land use element.
Yeah.
I mean, some of all the other elements, they're mostly technical in nature, you know, talking about, you know, capital facilities, you know, eh, eh, intergovernmental coordination. But the crux of the matter is really the future land use. That's where you establish the policy that would translate the vision of the city.
And then follows the LDRs, which basically
And a year later.
implements the, and that's, that's, that's the detail.
That's the detail.
That's, you're looking at the constitutional strategy of the city in one hand. On the other hand, you're looking at the statute, the code sections, the land development regulations that bring that document to life for the city. And, and that's the strategy. So you have the strategic plan, and now you have the strategy that, that implements.
And if the vision is not there, by whatever you do with your regulations, you would not implement that vision.
What if we adopted sort of a, a comprehensive plan strategy for these next so many months, where we, as soon as, like, as of tonight, we request for the latest documentation, it's distributed to all of us, and at our next meeting, after the other items of the agenda or take place, that we then, uh, different commissioners may have raised different points, and we discuss it, and whether we have somebody, the consultants there or not.
I tend to agree with that, but I think
And we do it month after month.
Bill, I really believe that the consultants should hear from us.
Alright.
I, I really do. I, I, you know, it's nice to be nice, but remember what I said at the meeting over there? If we're gonna change this city for the best,
Yep.
we gotta dare to be great. Remember that, dare to be great when we were kids?
Yep, yep.
That's what we gotta do here. We gotta have a dynamic vision, we gotta go high, we gotta change the whole mentality.
Right.
I said, "I'd rather have a wealthy city helping poor people than a poor city helping nobody," and that's what we got to do.
Well, I'm, I'm not proposing not to have the consultants here, but I, I don't know if we can expect the consultants to show up every meeting for the next six months or seven months. But, but we could have discussion every month towards the end of the meeting. We could have that discussion, and if they can, if the consultants can appear sooner or later, or a couple times,
Why, why couldn't they come every, every month? Well, I mean, we're paying them.
To, to, to answer our questions?
Well, that, that Well, if it's an agenda, if we make an, an agenda item, that's a part of the, that meeting's agenda.
Maybe you're right.
And then it's open, it's, we're gonna get public input, it's gonna be on record. We are requesting that, that consultant, eh, or a representative of the consultant firm be there. I don't care if he's a junior executive, or, or the president of the consulting firm. He should be there to address the questions that we'll bring up, uh, along with the process that we are, we are going to start implementing.
So, yeah, and, and this would also allow, this is sounding better and better. This would also allow the public to attend during that session, and we would get input from them too, correct? We would, we would allow, we would bring public input to then be able to help forward. We're not taking a vote on it, it's not a, it's not a formal vote, but it's a way of moving it forward to the benefit of all.
So, so you, you want, you want that at the next meeting, at the May fifth?
I have no problem with it if, if no one, no one else does, but do you have material that you can get ready before that meeting that we can get?
'Cause, 'cause they just submitted a draft last week, which, which we are reviewing. We already have a draft document.
So in theory, we can get that by the next, the next scheduled meeting.
We have it right now.
You can email it.
Do you, do you anticipate, in order for the, for the city itself to meet the timeline, to get everything done, are you looking down the road at special meetings during the summertime?
No, 'cause we were thinking about, you know, May having at least the first reading, so we can meet that statutory requirements, 'cause the dead, the draft deadline is September. We have to adopt that, eh, adopt that, the complaint by September.
So it, it's better, it's better to, for us to take more, to, to get more attention on a more regular basis, than just leave it to the last minute and rush something.
Yes, adopted. Second reading by the council.
By September.
You have, you have the ordinance, eh, adopting, you know, the complaint amendment, the year-based amendment to the complaint, and submitting, transmitting to the state.
I don't, I don't wanna beat a dead horse. We talked about this last year.
Last year, yes.
But then wouldn't maybe too late of a date for us to meet, to go over that item?
I mean, that's what I was suggesting. I need the direction from, from the commission to tell me, when, if you want to meet with the council, when.
The next meeting.
We don't want to wait too long either.
The next meeting. Can it be scheduled for the next meeting?
But that would be in May, right?
The May meeting.
At the May meeting, or?
Yes. That's a start. I don't have my calendar in front of me.
How, how is that gonna be enough time to give the consultants enough time to change the items, to then bring it for the first reading?
But they already have their draft, right?
They already have their
So then that means that we need to go over the draft to then have them bring the changes.
It's not much of a big date difference from the workshop, which is at the end of April.
Yes. Yeah, so I don't think, if, if we do, but, but if we do hold the workshop, eh, can, maybe you guys can come at the workshop and
I'll be there, but again, just as Bill said, that environment is not the best, to be honest, it's not the best environment to bring up topics and go through things like that, 'cause you'll lose, all the residents will be lost. They'll be sleeping or they'll leave. 'Cause they're not gonna, they're not gonna do what we do.
No, but if there's, if there's a workshop, I think it may be more productive, you know, for that meeting to be just for the planning commission.
Oh, just for the planning force?
Well, maybe
No, but then that's a planning meeting. You can't do that.
It's gotta be a special meeting. Yeah. No, it, it has to be open to the public.
I'm okay with whatever. Yeah, why don't, why don't we go ahead with them having their public presentation?
Have them here, Bill, have them here.
No, 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 let us, let us also have the public presentation. That's the dog and pony show that they do for the public, and everybody's invited. It's a, it's a large, broad crowd, nothing wrong with that. And then we also have, uh, our sessions after our regular agendas. We add it to that, eh, as long as we can, to also get public input, to have our input, public input, and to try to work on, on more of the details. It seems like it would be a win-win. We'd have all the bases covered, wouldn't we? And if we do that as, sooner rather than later, get the drafts as soon as possible, like, like now, and get the, get the updates, oh, you know, it won't be saved to the last minute. We won't have what happens, and, not that this is a guarantee that it won't happen anyway, but when these things come out in the end, and all of a sudden it's before us or for the council, all of a sudden, there's this last minute, um, you know, it, it's a, it's a very chaotic, very, uh, uh, unappealing, uh, scene. And, uh, I think a lot of errors take place when that rush takes place. If we could, we could address these things in advance, it'll be to everyone's benefit, and with, with a little bit more, uh, a little bit more of a timeline to, to do that.
Alright, hearing no other comments, um,
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is scheduled when?
May fifth.
And that gives us
May fifth.
May fifth?
May fifth.
And that gives us enough time to review the, the items, right?
If we get the documents, it's on staff.
Dropbox.
It's a staff's
Dropbox, yeah, it's a big task.
Job to get it to us, and keep our fingers crossed. And that's what we're Like I said, uh, uh, Mr. Each, I don't care if it's the president of the company of the consultants, or a junior executive. We, we want a consultant representing
As long as they're well versed in, in what they're presenting as well.
Well, they should be. They're getting paid to be, and, um, they're getting paid top dollars.
You'll be surprised.
They did the last one.
Yeah.
They were the one who did the last one.
Okay, okay.
Except for we forgot for commercial vehicles.
Having no other, having no other business, uh,
Oh, is there, okay.
That was the chapter twenty-nine rewrite.
Okay.
Alright, folks, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and call for adjournment. Alright, we are now adjourned.
Excellent.